Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call order the Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Wilson?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Allison?
Here.
Fady?
Here.
Mullin?
Here.
New Master?
Here.
All right. Would you all please stand and join us in the part of the ladies.
My representatives to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivil with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Induction of the student representatives. Dr. Kaczynski, this is you.
Thank you. Chair Mullin, members of the school board. It's my pleasure tonight to welcome our new student representatives for this 2019, 2020 school year. There Madison Carroll, Lauren Eddie, as we call her. 12th grade student at South Campus. She will serve as a student representative for the 2019-20 school year. She's president of the National Honor Society and participates in ambassadors and student council. She plays varsity soccer and gymnastics and looks forward to being a student representative in the opportunities for both the whole here from her and a little bit of the student report. And then Jennifer Adams, welcome. Jennifer City, maybe waves over. So Jennifer is an 11th grade student at South Campus. She will serve as the alternate student representative for this school year. She's involved in advancement via individual determination on Avid. She's co-chair for a youth council and has recently joined the district strategic planning team. So welcome Jennifer. So welcome, Boyd Anthony.
Before us, we've got an agenda for this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of them.
A motion by Ms. Allison, a second by Ms. New Master. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, we have an agenda. Also before us, we have a consent agenda. This is sundry items that typically come up before the school board on a monthly basis. One of the things that we're very thankful for is the generosity of the community and this month is no different. So with that, I would like to, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Uh huh.
Motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fady. Any discussion for the consent agenda? Seeing none, seeing none, that's what we require a roll call to.
Wilson?
Aye.
Lloyd?
I'm Chapman.
I'm.
Allison?
I'm.
Fady?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
New Master?
Aye.
All right, we have consent agenda adopted. This is a portion of the, of the meeting that we open up for color forms. Any members of the public wishing to speak or address the school board? Typically would ask you to fill out a white card that is over there on the table. Not seeing no white cards. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our first informational item, which is C1, which is the opening school report. Dr. Kaczynski?
Thank you, Mr. Mullin and members of the board. So this is an annual September school board meeting event. It really is a celebratory event to open the school year. And so different, either some different areas in the district are going to highlight a particular area. And so if you, I'm just, it's interesting what these typically are. So I'll put it with Sarah Pauls as a student representative. Teaching woman, welcome, Miss Paul.
Great. Thank you Chair Mullin, Dr. Kaczynski, Ms. Carroll and members of the board. Summer is a really important time for teachers to just take a chance to really dig deep into their professional practice and just to improve on their art and the craft of their, their practice. And this summer, the teaching learning team led and facilitated trainings for over six, over 850 educators. So 850 educators participating in trainings in order to again prepare for the upcoming school year. And I wanted to share a couple of highlights in terms of what was happening and happening at each level. For our elementary educators, there were two focus areas. You know with our strategic plan, we have this coordinated uniqueness that there's site teams that have identified priorities at their site level and they've been digging in and creating action plans for, for that work. And on top of that, there's been some emerging themes that really are a tie that binds across all of those plans. One of those areas is literacy. And so our principals got together and then along with the instructional coaches, they've been working with teams of teachers to really look at structured and explicit instruction in the areas of phonemic awareness and phonics and strengthening that aspect of our overall literacy, literacy program. In addition to that, thinking about the multi-team system of supports that we have for academics in our district that we've really solidified and really continued to improve on over the years. All of the strategic plans notice that we really had some area opportunity for growth for social and emotional learning. And so one of the opportunities that happened in partnership with student support services is that we partnered with 916 and every single site brought together a team that all were participating in a training that is going to follow through the trainings that are happening as the school year starts in order to get some, some more systems in place. And then another opportunity was with our community ed department, partnership there on a grant, the SHIP grant for active recess. And that training was for para professionals and extended day staff in order to really encourage physical activity and decrease behaviors and injuries on the playground. And then the third area had to do with equity and access to opportunities. And again, being mindful that we wanted to really support and coordinate uniqueness that was happening so that each site team's plan could really move forward with robust actions moving into the school year. For middle school, one of the main focuses again was literacy. And we want our middle school students to really be resilient readers. And we want them to have a toolkit of strategies so that they know how and when to best use the strategies that they have to apply their skills in reading and then in writing texts. And so teams of teachers got together for some training for that. And then across middle school and high school, a continued priority of ours is Avid, advancement via individual determination, which is a college and career readiness program that we have had a chance to talk with you about many times. We have growing participation in that as well as going to school-wide efforts to make sure that all students have access to that programming. And you'll just notice a lot of conversation, structured movement and student-centered teaching practices that Avid brings to all of our classrooms, which we're really excited about. And then at the high school level, in addition to Avid, there was a lot of work around course enhancements and new course development. And you'll hear about that a little bit more in upcoming presentations. In addition to the time that teachers spend in these real structured, professional development opportunities, they're spending a lot of time on their own reading and working with community partners to really think about how they can bring authentic experiences into the classroom. And a couple that I wanted to highlight for you, we have a teacher at British Lake Elementary who saw some exciting programming happening at Lincoln Elementary in terms of this program called Genius Hour. And so those two teachers worked together over the summer and they're replicating practices that they see in one building into their building in order to increase student engagement and excitement around learning. Another thing that we've talked about in the past is at Willow Lane, we saw a lot of success through a grant we had through the ALIVE program. And the Sauer Family Foundation was generous to provide funding for that program over three years. That program is now being replicated in two of our other schools with a grant this year of over $300,000 that will support programming at Van Nuys Heights Elementary and Birch Lake Elementary. So we're excited to see some of these really good practices. We're learning from each other and making sure to find ways that we lean into what's working and bring those practices across to other schools. And then this other picture has several community partners that are coming together to really look at a common agenda that each of the different entities have a priority that by working together, we can actually all fulfill our missions in a better way. And so we're going to be talking with you about some of those programs that are next work studying, but this picture is around a partnership that has to do with sustainability. I'm excited to share more about you as that unfolds. And then of course, all of this is in preparation for students to be coming back to school. And we all know that, that back to school is a transition for every student, whether you're moving into a new grade level, moving into a new school, moving into a new community. And we know that the back to school is all about relationships, relationships, relationships. And so some of the things that we've put into place, such as welcome back conferences, again highly received by families and students and teachers as a really effective way to focus on a strong start to the school year. And then we have our web program, the middle school and Lincoln at the high school, just to name a few things that we do to make sure that students are supported in their transitions. One of the things that we all know is that learning does not start and end at the school bell. And we take great pride in the work that we do with our co-curricular activities. And so Brian Pelican is going to come up and share a little bit with you about that.
Good evening, Chair Mullin, members of the board, Dr. Kate, Ms. Carroll. Thank you for having me tonight to speak a little bit about our athletics and activities at the high school level. This fall, we offer nine Minnesota State High School League sports that currently have 492 participants. We currently also have 48 clubs and counting at the high school level. And we, we introduced five new clubs last school year. The one that probably has gotten the most attention is our curling club, which is blowing up across the Twin Cities. We were one of six schools to start last year with the curling club. It was already in existence and in our first year, we were the biggest in the North suburbs. And our curling club advisor has now kind of taken over, Mr. Wolford, for the organization. They, they meet up at Blaine a couple of days a week and we've got 42 kids that signed up last year. So it, it got large quick, which is really exciting because our goal with our clubs and our athletics is to get as many kids as possible involved in school outside of the school day. So that was a couple of exciting things going on for us last year. Looking forward to new things to come and more participation this year. Every year, I meet with my coaches a couple of times a year, my head coaches, once in the fall and once in the winter. We get together, we try to get together here in the wardroom. As you can see, we're upstairs for the Fall PD. This was just from this fall. All head coaches are invited into this and it's just a time for us to get together. Everybody's got busy lives. Everybody's got a lot going on. And so it's a nice way to get almost everybody, if not all of our coaches together to just meet a couple of times and go through some professional development. I bring in an organization called Positive Coaching Alliance or PCA. As a partner, it's much like the Why We Play initiative that the State High School League does. Our coaches have gotten more than their fill on that and my predecessor, Mr. Herman's done a great job in introducing that. So this is just bringing in other tools and slightly different tools. The one thing that they speak about is being a double goal coach, which is very similar to the Why We Play. Talks about we, we prepare, we practice and we play to win, but that isn't our overall purpose in our education-based athletics. And so kind of a double goal of doing those things to try to win, but bigger picture, developing people and developing individuals. We also get into a, a training and discussion on things, looking at the administrative side of coaching. All of our coaches are highly skilled in whatever it is that they're teaching. They're highly skilled in working with kids, but, but the half of that job that tends to get, get lost in the mix is the administrative side, the organization, the finance, the communication. And so we process some things. We talk about what's going well, what isn't going well, things that I'm seeing. It gives them an opportunity to discuss with each other what's going well in their programs or maybe bring up questions that they have for each other. We talk about different protocols that have been updated every year. Certain things get tweaked, whether it's attendance, grades, communication with parents, communication with me, transportation home. And so we talk about kind of the newest updates in the fall. And in the winter, we look at, is there anything we want to change or update now that we're halfway through the year? We talk about bullying and harassment is a, is a huge issue, especially with cyberbullying. And we talk about what to look for, how to handle those situations, what does our communication look like? What are the district policies? And just continuing to get that in the forefront of their brain. We speak on social media. It's this huge thing that's hanging over our students' heads all the time. And, and we look at not only how to teach appropriate citizenship for our student athletes, but also how do our coaches behave and interact using social media? Because it is a positive tool when used correctly and most of our teams have Twitter accounts, have Instagram pages and just how do we navigate that when most of our kids are minors and how do we work in that situation? And so that's a really good topic as well. And then lastly, working with parents. Parents are, we're, we're there for kids, but we're also there for families and parents. And so we have lots of really good conversations about being transparent, being proactive, how doing those two things will help with any situations generally speaking and just making sure that the parents know where their kids are and know what the expectations are. And then lastly, it's a chance for coaches to connect with each other. Like I said earlier, it's, it's nice for them to get together. They tend to be on islands when they're in their own sport as head coaches. And so this is an opportunity for them to, to maybe see that, that each other is living some of the same issues and problems that they're living and hopefully connect and work together. Lastly, a couple of fun tidbits from last year. Of the 30 sports that are offered at the State High School League, we had eight teams make it to state as, as teams. We broke nine girls' track records last spring. Unfortunately, most of those records had graduated last spring, but that was a pretty cool thing to have. Nine individual records broken in one spring. We had a girls' diver last fall who is here getting recognized for breaking a 21-year diving record at the YMCA. That was pretty outstanding. We had 15 separate individuals beyond the teams participate in a state tournament. We had 21 other individuals identified as all states on most of our sports. You're going to be identified as one of the top athletes in your sport in the state without actually having your team participate in that state. So we had 21 individuals named all state, I have both athletics and fine arts. So the fine arts is also for the State High School League sponsored debate, speech. And music, we've got music as well. We hosted the SEC Music Festival. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to come to the all-conference concert, but we had the all-conference band, choir and orchestra from every school in the conference performing that night. It's a huge, huge ordeal that we are privileged to host once every, it will be 10 years now that our year deal is in our conference. We had about 1,200 kids at South Campus during the day, going through sessions, working with clinicians. And then it concluded with that all, all-conference concert at night. That's, that's a pretty cool experience. If you didn't get to it, it happens every year. It's at Woodbury and it's usually the first Monday in February. And then lastly, we had 14 seniors last year sign national letters of intent. Those are student athletes who signed letters to participate in the Division One or Division Two level on scholarships. So they're actually going on with their athletics and getting some scholarship money to do so. So lots of good things happened last year, lots of good things to come this year. Any questions, thoughts?
Any questions?
I have a couple, if you don't mind.
No problem.
So first of all, I want to say that I think they do a great job and I think that coaches do a great job of teaching our student athletes. I'm just wondering kind of in this process, I didn't hear you say anything about evaluation. Do we evaluate our coaches at the end of the, end of the season?
Yes, yep. Every coach goes through. When, when I arrived, it was, there was an evaluation process, but it wasn't concrete. It was quite subjective and it seemed to be random. And I have stolen and tweaked an evaluation process that looks at four specific parts of that I think make up programs, academics, we serve our students, competition and then participation and retention. And so we look at, I gather data of every single sport. I do that through administering surveys to our students at the end of the season. All of our student athletes are given a survey with 28 statements on it that they have to determine whether they agree or disagree. And I look at what percentage of those statements they agree with. Some of them are about their experience. Some of them are about who they are as a teammate. Some of them are about their coaches. Some of them are just general about their opponents and the respect for the sport they participate in. I look at their GPAs and we look at average GPAs. We look at how many incoming freshmen are coming off for a particular sport and then how many are staying each year. Multi-sport athletes are becoming a huge thing. And so I look at what percentage of each sports, students are multi-sport athletes. And then lastly, I have a rating of competition that's basically get points for, you know, number of all-conference. Did they, did they increase their win percentage in conference play? Did they make it to a section final? And so I compile all of that. It actually becomes a GPA out of four points. And then determine whether they're excellent, proficient, and then we use that as a talking piece. And so every coach, starting last year, I started it fall of my first year with the Boys and Girls Lacrosse programs just to pilot it and it was fully implemented last year.
So I mean, and that's great. I, I, that's great hearing that. My other kind of piece to that is that, did you hear you say, you know, both of our sports, I think all of them have booster clubs? So do we include any feedback from the parents on the booster club?
At this point, no, I did not. I, the, the next iteration that I'm going to do this year is I'm going to meet with my outgoing captains in every sport and have a candid one-on-one conversation with them. I think you get good information from the student athletes that are surveyed. And I think we will continue to get better information by speaking with the student athletes. I, I hesitate sometimes to involve parents because I think you get the extremes rather than getting an, an understanding of, of where the program is at, which is what I think we get from the students.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, I believe this is Mr. Wall talking about operations.
Sure. The transportation department is made up of three different crews. We have our nutrition services, our facilities and the grounds, and then finally transportation. I got to talk first about transportation. No crew works harder than our drivers, bus aides and an office staff in the transportation department. They had a busy summer transporting kids to the multiple programs that we offered. In fact, Mike Trito, our transportation coordinator is in the office right now refining routes, making some final adjustments to stops for safety purposes and so forth. This, the data tells the story about what our drivers and bus aides are doing every day. They drive, our, our district own buses drive 564,000 miles in a year. Our contractors drive over 1.1 million for a total of 1.7 million miles driven. We have a tremendous safety record and it's because our, our, our staff and our transportation department take safety as their number one priority. So we're, we're thankful for them and thankful for Mike Trito, his leadership. Again, this year we'll contract, we are contracting the first student. Ray Bine, first student runs the majority of our contracted routes. Ray Bine has a few routes. And then Halo, Twin Cities and Treasure run vans and smaller vehicles for unique, unique routes. And I'll turn it over next to Bridget Lane, our coordinator for nutritional services.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. So I'm here, some updates with nutrition services this year. Everybody is really excited mostly about the new equipment that we've been purchasing, trying to maybe clean up some of our outdated equipment. So you'll see a picture of our brand new serving line over at Lake Gears Elementary. So they moved from tabletop units to actual steam walls so they can keep the food warm if it's out there. And then you could just tell a beautiful display as I can, it's kind of the line. Everybody was really excited on the first day of school over there when they got to see it. We also have installed five new dish machines. The oldest one replaced was more than 30 years old. It was in pretty good shape, but for a 30-year-old dish machine, the efficiency level that we have gone from is pretty impressive. We've also started installing some new steamers, sinks and doors, just bringing us back up to code. Again, we had two schools that still had wooden doors on their walk-in coolers. So we were able to replace those. And then nine of our schools, so now all of our schools have received RoboCool food processors. So when you see roasted potatoes on the menu, they're no longer chopping them all by hand. They're very happy to be doing 50 to 100 pounds of potatoes through a machine. So everyone's really excited about that. We've also had the two grants last spring. So we have purchased three new milk coolers and some more self-service heating units for our high schoolers, kind of trying to bring them out of the school cafeteria experience and maybe more what they might see when they start moving on into college. So I had some great feedback on that. And probably what everyone is most excited about this year is we started a food donation program. So piloted over the summer at two of our sites. And so what that is, is instead of extra food going into the pig barrel, it's now going to humans. So they package it up, they freeze it, they put it in the cooler, they send it off to be donated. Somebody comes and picks it up and brings it to a group home or a women's shelter or somewhere where it can actually be used. And so all of our coaches are really excited about that. I think our poundage was 700 pounds to date so far.
Questions, comments? Ms. White?
I love the idea that the food is finally going to, to people instead of going in pig barrels. Just from having looked at Hugo, it just used to just floor me how much food was being thrown away because the kids are just so little and they're not eating and talking the whole time. So I think that's, that was.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. This was a really big year for construction projects, bigger than any year that I've ever been since I've been here. And top of the list roofing projects. We did six roofing projects this summer. Four were total roof replacements. So we did total replacements over at Normandy, ALC, Willow, and as you'll see, the parking lot right at the hip. Jobs went right to the wire with this rainy summer we had. But the roofing was totally finished by August 30th. We still got some trim work, gutters and things like that going on right now, but otherwise everything was finished in time. Another big project we did, long-awaited project, was the North Campus Window Project. Over in the 100, 200 wing, we replaced all the old rotten windows. Many of them wouldn't open or when they did open, couldn't get them closed. So that was a, a positive project we completed this summer. We also did some parking lot resurfacing over at ALC, Matoska, in the back of District Center here. So the lots are now in good shape. They were in pretty rough shape. And then I want to highlight a couple of flooring projects that we did. The Birch Lake Gym Floor, if any of you have seen that in the past, we just had old decent tile. Many were water damaged and we put a new rubber gym floor in with a bare hole in center court, which is pretty cool. And our solar projects, the installations have started on our six solar projects. We have solar going on six of our roofs. On five of them, the panels are already on top of the roof. And on three of them, the panels are hooked up, but not in service yet. So hopefully by the end of October, five or six solar installation projects will be complete and we'll be piping in energy from our solar panels into our buildings. By the end of October, hopefully on at least five of the six. Sunrise is a little behind because we did the roofing project over there. So they're just getting started on Sunrise now that the roofers are off the building.
Questions, comments?
Just one. I mean, it's amazing and I mean, worked in North and dealt with windows, I'm sure they cheered. And I'm just excited about solar installation. And I do recall when they presented their project to us, I don't know, three, four months ago or something like that, they talked about the amount of data that would be provided to teachers so that whether they want to work with it with math or science. Do you know on that will be online?
Yeah, we've had discussions with them about some educational packets we can send out to parents and students and teachers. And they're working on that for us right now. So hopefully by the time the panels are online, that we'll have all that information to provide teachers and parents.
Thank you.
Ms. White?
Could you just remind me which of the, which six buildings, the, the solar panels are going on?
Oneika, Birch, Lake Gears, Willow, Matoska and Sunrise. We kind of spaced it out based on our four roofs. They're going on the gym roofs at all of them except for Birch. And our gym roofs on these six locations are fairly new. As you know, we did the Matoska, Lake Gears, Willow ones a few years back. So that's why we chose those buildings is because of the rough age and we won't have to move down during their service life.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you very much.
Hey, good evening. So this summer, to extend its full year services, provided instruction to 125 students, 20 K through age 21, who demonstrated the need for summer services to make progress on their goals. One of the summer highlights was a Safety and Community Helpers Day with Officer Brian Link. I'd like to thank the White Bear Lake Police Department who partnered with us on that and Officer John Betty for helping us organize this fun day. Last week. Sorry. Last week, we presented on conscious discipline and for all of our early childhood staff. And conscious discipline is a strategy of teaching and socially emotional learning. And so the reason that we are implementing this is part of our strategic plan. And we're really excited about this because we're also going to offer this training to parents in October as well as all our childcare providers in our community. And the next thing that we're going to talk about is a new career pathway experience for our transition education students. So we're really excited. We were able to purchase an AP laser with some of different funds through the third-party billing as well as with the foundation. And we are going to be implementing that this current year with all our students at the Transition Education Center. And what we'll be doing is we're partnering with Putnam Farmhouse Style Furniture and they're cutting the boards for us. And then our students will be working on that and they're going to be taking orders for this holiday season. And they're going to really work on. And they're going to really work on some other different skills around their career in Entrepreneurship Class that they're going to be having. Any questions?
Question, cell phone.
The Conscious Discipline Program, is that specifically for young students? Or do they have programs that are geared toward older students as well?
Yeah, Conscious Discipline had me through the elementary ages too, so some districts do implement that. Right now, we're implementing it with the early childhood, just because some of our elementary schools are already steeped in some socially-emotional learning practices. But we see something like that continuing on as we're partnering with elementary and early childhood and some of the different initiatives we have coming forward.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Steve Asper, Director of Technology Innovation, here to talk to you about some of the things that were going on in the Tech Department this summer. Summer's a busy time for all departments, as we're hearing, and technology is no exception. And our summer Tech Depot students play a huge role in that process. We had 31 student workers this summer wiring over 700 Chromebooks into carts. And then they processed by un-palating, unboxing, unwrapping, enrolling, and asset-taking over 2,000 new Chromebooks. And then, in addition to cleaning physically and digitally 1,200 additional Chromebooks. In addition to the hardware, the students also supported events such as teacher trainings, and this photo that was taken at the employer breakfast. And note the cool student-designed and partner-funded t-shirts that students wore this summer. In addition to that, Technology Department staff were working on installing 40 flat-screening TVs in classrooms. They replaced over 100 desktop computers and also updated the Internet content filter Lightspeed on almost 1,600 desktop computers. That process is something that happens digitally and automatically sent out to your computers, but each one has to be touched individually for a final setup. Technology is also busy supporting training in the summer, like new teacher orientation and reserve teacher trainings. And Innovation Camp this summer featured 17 courses in three morning sessions with an optional supportive collaboration session in the afternoon, and trained over 50 teachers. And two of the ideas that were moved forward in the Big Sleuth also had big events happen this summer. One was that the washer and dryer were installed at the ALC for student use. And secondly, last week, Lifetouch delivered the vouchers for free student photo packages. Those will be distributed to schools later this week. So that's just a quick summary, not a comprehensive list of all of our work in the Technology Department, but I'll end with the over 5,000 Chromebooks that were distributed in the last week to students. This is always a monumental task that takes a lot of work from our talented team of tech staff in collaboration with building staff, and we're very proud of them. So thank you. Questions?
So can you, great work, by the way, but can you tell me, I know for a while there, our plan was to get one-to-one on Chromebooks from, you tell the WRAP, from what grades to what grades?
Absolutely. So our Chromebooks are one-to-one from grades three through 12. Grades six through 12 are essentially a true one-to-one in that students are holding them 24/7 and have them. Grades three, four, five, and six have classroom sets in those Chromebooks for the time they stay in the classroom. And grades K through two have two students per touchscreen device ratio. And that has all been implemented now.
And those stay in the classroom also?
They stay in the classroom as well. Thank you very much.
Other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Where do the Chromebooks that are no longer used in the third-hand electronics, where do they end up? I mean, where, do we have a contract with a recycling firm, or I'm just curious, where are all the...
Yeah, we do. We have, there are three things that happen with our electronics. Once they come back, our Chromebooks that are still usable are some of the ones that the students cleaned and kind of refurbished and got ready to redeploy. And they're often deployed in places of need that maybe aren't a real strong need, but would be a want rather than a must-have. For example, one-off devices for a check-in kiosk for students that are coming in during the middle of the school day, for example, those kinds of things. So we try to get as much life out of them as we can. Once they're ready to be retired, we do have a program where we can resell them to a recycler if there's any value left in them. And we do that so that we can offset the cost of some of our other electronics recycling that now we have to page recycle, so we can get that to be in net sales.
Other stuff and questions?
Two questions. One is about the recycling. I remember when the Chromebooks went in, it was reported that the lifespan was expected to be about three years, and then they needed to be replaced. What have you found it to be at this point?
We found that it really depends on the model of the Chromebook. And now that Chromebooks have been around a little bit longer, manufacturers are making them to higher standards, and they're lasting a little bit longer. So our earlier Chromebooks, we were struggling to get three years out of them. Now, we've actually gone to a four-year cycle with high school students. So our freshmen that will receive a new Chromebook this year, we're counting on it lasting through their high school career.
They get their same Chromebook, that's so they have motivation to treat it nicely.
Absolutely.
That's good. My other question is, and we had a discussion of this, I think, at maybe the last work study that you were at, but we were talking about, how do we make sure every student, we can provide Wi-Fi access hotspot or something at their home, and not tell them to go to a company house to read their textbook? So what's our plan and how well are we taking it up this fall?
We're exploring other opportunities for that right now. But since our last discussion, we've been focused on getting these out the door, and then we'll be able to focus a little bit more on that process. We know that we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 5% or 6% of our students that are in some sort of need, and we need to follow that with some more information about what level of need they need help with. But we are, with the inventory that we do have of hotspots, they're already in the process of being checked out to students.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you very much.
I'll turn it over to Matt Moss.
Good evening. The Human Resources Department's been working very hard over the summer. It's actually one of our busiest periods as we get into the spring and then all the way through the summer. Just a little bit of nothing on contract negotiations. We do have actually our kind of agreement with the WBLTA to come before the board this evening, so we'll have a little bit more information on that. But we're certainly excited to be entering the school year with that agreement in place. And then we're working really hard. We actually have kind of an interesting phenomenon where we have nearly all of our contracts open at the same time right now. And so we're working hard to stage, to stage those negotiation processes, which will take place largely throughout the fall here, headed into the winter. And we're also taking the time to just make sure that we have people properly grouped that we're... So that as we're finding settlements, we're making sure that we don't have outliers and that we're not finding winners and losers within our system. So we're taking some time to step back and pay some attention there as well. New hires for the year. So the other thing that our department has been working incredibly hard on is getting ready so that we're fully staffed for the school year. Yeah, it was down to the wire, but I think we're essentially there. So you can see, we've got almost 98 new employees, and these are just our full-time, or our permanent employees in the district. You can see there that we had administrators throughout the district working incredibly hard through their hiring practices to bring in new staff members, whether those were teachers, paraprofessionals, clerical employees that kind of come in with that common denominator of being here for the right reasons and being able to build really strong relationships with their stakeholders. So we've had a focus there. We've also really taken some time to look at some new strategies in order to see that we continue to make strides so that our students see themselves in the staff and faculty that they're working with throughout our system. So that was certainly an emphasis and an effort that we put some thought into and changed some practices around as we went into this year's hiring season. So a huge thank you to my staff that worked incredibly hard over the summer and as we're approaching the fall here, and a huge thank you also to all of our building and Department and Program administrators that worked so hard to make sure that we've got wonderful people to deliver our services and work with our kids since the school year here.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, in terms of the staff persons of color, how did we compare this year as far as the incoming group compared to other years? Did we make any headway there?
We did. It's actually fairly significant, stronger, especially in the areas, especially with our teaching group. So we saw some significant canes there. And like I said, we did, we did move forward with some targeted strategies to try and make that happen. And we felt like we were able to experience some success there.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the Board. I'm here tonight to talk about Community Services and Recreation Department. As you are all well aware, we're celebrating a lot of milestones in the district this year. And if you've seen our catalog in your homes, this year we're celebrating 65 years of the Rec Department as part of White River Lake Area Schools. So in celebration of that, I did find it really fitting to wear our iconic Rec t-shirt here tonight that has been there since, that originated 65 years ago. So let's dive right in. So our Early Childhood Education Program, today was our first day of our 1920 program, so we welcome all of our early learners to our buildings. Currently have 138 early childhood family ed students and 290 pre-K students total, with additional ones on waiting list, so we are proactively seeking additional locations within the district to meet the needs of finding spots for those children. Our screening started in August. Screening is required by the state for all children entering kindergarten. We do provide these screenings at no cost to the families, and within just the two days in August, we've seen over 60 kids already. And we will see additional screening dates throughout the entire school year. So if parents are looking for screening dates, just call us or look on our website. That information will be available for you. Lisa Warren already mentioned our Conscious Discipline Training, so I'm not going to take too much time up to that, but it was great to see our ECFE, ECSE, and Bear Fundamental staff all together this training to have consistent strategies across our programs and our serving our young students. And one new opportunity we're happy to talk about this year is we've also had a, we started a Grandparent to Meet class, which provides opportunities for grandparents or grand friends of our young learners to interact with our young learners through intentional learning activities this year. Just some of the core dates coming up. Our Conscious Discipline, like Lisa had mentioned, is October 3rd for parents in the community or perhaps our childcare centers. We have a farm trip, field trip to Pine Haven, nighttime screening option for parents who might have a difficult time getting their kids in during the day on October 14th. Community baby shower on the 15th, and one of the best parties of the year, our annual Early Childhood Costume Party at our Normandy Park location. And if you haven't been, highly recommended. Parents get into it with the kids too. They come up with all kinds of crazy costumes and stuff to wear. I'll be there. You can look for me. I haven't decided yet, but I might be going as Tim Law, so. Our lunchtime programs, you can see that our numbers compared to this year of the semester continue to go up, so we're very excited to see that. The, we did add an additional Bear Fundamentals section as to meet the demand as of the year approach. And for those of you that may not be aware, our Bear Fundamentals program is an all-day pre-K option for our four-year-olds. It's technically not under the Early Childhood section right now, but it is an opportunity that we offer for those parents that are looking for that all-day option to provide that variety for parents that need it. So we did add another one at Hugo for this year. Last year, we awarded $25,000 in scholarships assistance for families that qualified for the scholarships, and we will continue that this year as well to do our best to make sure that students get to participate in the programs that they like to be in. Our Free Middle School, our Free School, oh, I'm sorry. Our Free Middle School Flex Program continues this year. In addition to that, we're also going to be expanding into some opportunities for service learning and career exploration within our programs as well. Currently in our catalog, we have over 60, or 76 offerings for youth enrichment opportunities for kids. So if parents are looking for something new with their kids or something that meets their child's interest, please look in our catalog or go online. I guarantee we have something that fits their need. Our Targeted Services is available for students who need additional academic support after school. That usually starts around, usually early to mid-October. This year, we do plan to increase our communication to build teacher awareness and use it as an intervention strategy, and then build cohesion between teaching, learning, and community to better support our students. And then our, just some upcoming events. Our middle school events are expanding even more this year, so we'll have additional options for our middle school students with our Friday Night Live events, open gym, movie nights, and more. Our 30-annual Middle School Lock-In will be on October 17th. And what's great about our middle school programs is they're not school-specific. We intentionally program these opportunities for students from Sunrise and Central to meet together so they get an opportunity to start meeting other peers that they're going to be going to high school up in the next year to depend upon their grade. So we're excited to see those expand. And then just our last slide, we have just countless number of events and activities coming up here. I'm just going to, there's a lot listed up here, but I'm just going to just kick off a few. Continuing the success of our Many Faces White River Lake Collaboration, this year we'll be kicking off our Many Faces Many Stories series. The first one starts this Thursday the 12th from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Hanaford Performing Arts Center. It's a book discussion from a book called The Best That We Could Do, which focuses on the Immigration and Lasting Effects of Displacement, and author T. Bowie will be there in attendance to discuss her book. And these events will continue on where, if you remember, it's a collaboration with us, the Greater White River Lake Foundation, Historical Society, Montomedi, and Century College. So there's a number of opportunities coming up for that this year. Homecoming, our 6.24K will be on September 28th at 9:00 AM. And for those of you that have attended in the past, just know that this year it is at North Campus this year, as it'll coincide with our 100-year anniversary, though we'll be celebrating that day here as well at our class 100-year reunion. Our adult basic education courses are continuing to be underway. We did move back to the Area Learning Center after being at South Campus for the summer. So we will continue our ESL classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 noon and 5:00 to 8:00, and 5:00 to 8:00. If you know of anyone in need of English as a Second Language courses, or perhaps GED prep or information, excuse me, on careers in healthcare, IT, or paraprofessional, please contact us. We'd be happy to connect them with those services. And lastly, for our youth recreation, our rec soccer, volleyball, and flag football programs are underway. If you're out and about September 19th, swing by South Campus and watch our young flag football players compete on the turf under the lights outside. It's a great time if you've never seen, if you've never been there for that, the kids just love being out on the field with the big kids, get to play, and under the lights. It's just a, it's a really cool environment for them. And then currently, we're already, our registration is also already open for our rec basketball programs for grades one through 12 coming up here, as well as our middle school registration. Our wrestling program is also open. So just a reminder, it's the, check out our catalog. Visit us online. We have tons of opportunities for the entire community. And if you have any ideas or an opportunity at an A age level that we're currently now offering, please contact us. We'd love to hear a chance to say and see what we can do to offer that.
Questions, comments, cell phone?
I just wanted to say I really appreciate that there's a nighttime for screening. From a two-working parent household, I really appreciate that, and I hope that there'll be more opportunities for that.
Yeah, yeah, it's tough because it's something, sometimes people question whether or not the students are at their best at night, that late, but I feel like at 3:00 to 7:00, it's a good time to go, anything after that. I have two little ones. I want to bring them.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, and members of the school board, and our student peers as well. I'm Frances Betty, the Communications Director, and so I'll give a brief overview of some fun things that are happening in the Communications Department. It is always a fun time. We always have exciting things happening. So what we've chosen to really focus on for tonight is the tangible things, the things that people can have on their hands and see in front of them as we prepare for the school year. And so some of these may absolutely be familiar to you as well, but the Activities Calendar came out and was available to our family, the website. for families to pay attention to. And additionally, that was also nailed out in Spanish to Spanish-speaking families as well, which was a nice switch for us to be doing this summer. Speaking of that, then the translations, certain publications from the district, of course, were created in both the Spanish and the English versions. In addition to an event that many of you were able to attend, the communication event, we had a hand in that in welcoming all of our staff members back and employing the likes of students and staff members to be involved in that welcoming experience for all of our staff members. A way that our parents and our families have gotten involved has been through our Back to Bears challenge, or Back to School Bears challenge. On Facebook, we invited people to hashtag Back to School Bears in any Facebook posts that they had done. And as you can see, our families had a lot of fun with that. This is a combination of photos that we had gotten last, last week when our middle school, high school, elementary, and then of course kindergarten, students started last year, and then we'll do the same thing for the classes that are starting this, this week. I'm sorry, I said year, last week. And then this week, the early childhood programs, including our bare fundamentals program, we've invited those parents to do the same. So I'm hoping that we'll have just as many beautiful photos of our students who are pre-k to be able to share on as well. And then in addition to that, of course, we have our regular communications. A couple of them would be the facts that we share on every day on our social media accounts, our community emails and letters, of course, we do the weekly video, and we've started that again now that this school year has started. So we continue to share our information and keep people engaged and informed in those ways. Our attention has also, of course, been, been turned this year to our informational campaign for the bond 2019 referendum. So in, early in the summer, we had done the Bears update and included information about the bond referendum or potential bond referendum and facilities planning process at that point. And then the Bears bulletin, that was just in August, and mailed to all families along with the community services catalog, included a three-page spread about that as well, just letting people know the information involved in a really comprehensive plan that people, of course, need to, need to read to understand or catch, catch the details. And in addition to that, we've got fact sheets and bookmarks that we have created for people to come to that understanding and, and get what's going into this, in addition to the informational videos and articles written by Dr. Kasmercheck and by others. Translated information is important to make sure that we're providing the information in the way that people are looking for us to do so. Public meetings are coming up, and I know that Dr. Kate has been meeting with a lot of groups already, but then we do have three plus one at the senior center public meetings coming up as well, an opportunity for people to come in, hear the information, and ask their questions as well. And then on the docket as well will be a district-wide mailing that we're working on, and then again, the, using our regular channels to get information out to people will be an important part of that. And so I'll end there before I have a final slide, but first I'll make sure that nobody has any questions.
Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, then I'll end with a fun welcome to the academic year. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Dr. Kate, all for the, wow. I just want to, yeah, sorry, it's weird. Just want to thank you all for your work. I mean, I know that there's a lot that goes into getting everybody back into school, and I've been hearing a lot of positive things, so thank you all for everything you've done to help prepare the district to head back to school. And I'll speak for my household and say, my wife is extremely happy that the kids are back in school. With that, we can move on to our next informational item, E2, which is an update from the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation. So, Dr. Kate, you know-
Yes, I can welcome Andrea Locknow, President of White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation and Don Hayne, the Executive Partner, and he will share some important information with us.
Good evening Chair Mullen and members of the school board. Andrea and I are excited to be here. Andrea's been with the foundation for quite a few years, but she is in her main voyage as our Board President, and we're really fortunate to have her. So we wanted to tell you a few things. For the last school year, of course, we're at a new school year and lots of great grants and things coming up. Last year, we granted about $160,000 in the form of grants and scholarships to students and teachers. It was a great year. And there's just a couple that I wanted to tell you about. There's a gazillion actually that I'd like to tell you about, but one of which is a Brochus grant, and if you're not familiar, that's a teacher classroom grant. And sometimes we'll get about $90,000 in requests from teachers, and we have maybe about $25,000 to work with, so it's always a conundrum, and we try to grant as much as we can. One of them that was kind of exciting, the board was really excited about, was Central Middle School special ed teachers, that was Susan Hicks and Lisa Olson, submitted a grant for what they call kernels for Kids. And it's very cool. It, so we granted the request, and it allows about 50 special ed students to have hands-on opportunity to develop work-related skills. They're selling popcorn. So they're popping the popcorn, they're wiring the popcorn, they're doing the accounting around it. So it's basically a small business, and everybody has a hand in and a piece of that in how they're marketing. And so they sell that popcorn to Central and the district center. So that was a fun one, really productive, and it's great to see the kids interacting and how that, how we develop and where they find a niche with that. So that was a fun one for Brochus. Another one is our classroom grant, and that is teacher professional development. It's always very popular. We've had so many interesting grants that have come in for teachers around the world, you know, opportunities to go to conferences and see how they're teaching in Sweden. One of them that I particularly like, I didn't know when I put this in that Tiffany Dietrich would be here this evening, but Tiffany and her co-partant Catherine Olsson submitted a classroom grant, and they wanted to take a tour to Alabama, Arkansas, Georgia, Tennessee, Mississippi, all kinds of things, and this is in the summer of 2018. They called it the Art of the World Universe. And so this was a road trip that they did, and all about social justice. They have a passion around social justice, and the things that they saw on the trip were astounding. And when they presented to our board, it was just impactful to hear the experiences that they had and had to meet people that were very proactive in the 60s. And so when they brought that back, and Tiffany obviously could speak to this more than I could, but when they brought that back after the trip and they talked to a variety of different organizations, it had such impact that there's another organization in the city that now is going to be sending children to take the same tour. So, you know, when I think about what we granted to the foundation, you don't know what the ripple effect is, or if it's one person, or if it's going to be hundreds of people in this particular case, it was really impactful. So we were excited about that one. There's lots of them that I'd like to tell you about, but we have awarded over $37,000 in the form of student scholarships and grants. Our Angel Fund is always needed in the district. Sometimes we forget that there's a need in our very own district here. We provided about $14,000 for, to secure food and housing for families in need. Our closet, which is located at the ALC, we provide warm clothing, we get inundated at this time of year for folks that need assistance, and about 200 children were surveyed last year. So we're excited about that. I could go on, but Andrea has an invitation for you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening Chair Mullen and members of the school board. So I'd like to personally invite you to our Bare Lake C event, which is being launched October 11th. You've already heard about it, registration is live on our website, so you can just log on and purchase and take it. But this is one of two major fundraisers, was that we do the foundation, and we do a golf event, and we do fundraisers in the fall. Some fun things this year that we're doing, we had a very generous donation from White Bear Mitsubishi, and they are donating, let's see, it's a two-year lease, we're going to $5,000 towards the purchase of a vehicle, so we're hosting a raffle this year, so something fun and different. But we are going to be pre-selling tickets at the homecoming game, probably on September 27th, and then at the all-school reunion as well on that morning, October 28th. So look for us there. So we're hoping to make a difference this year in kind of our fundraising model and doing something a little bit different. So we invite you to attend if you're able to. I think that's, that's all I have for now, so thank you.
Is there any questions for you, Chair Mullen? I'll just want to say personally for me, thank you very much for your work. It really means a lot, and I'm very grateful to have you doing that work, so thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
We'll move on to our next informational item, E3, which is the superintendent's report, Dr. Kasmercheck.
Good evening Chair Mullen and members of the board. Well, we enjoyed welcoming the students back to the 2019, 2020 academic year. Elementary and secondary students began last week, and our early childhood programs begin this week. Throughout the district, there were many excited smiles as young students entered our front doors after a summer vacation, or in some cases, for the very first time. We wish all our students a terrific year. In addition to our weekly newsletters and usual information shareouts, we invite you to enjoy 2624 inspired initiatives on our district Facebook and Twitter pages. So every Friday, the district will post a video update of the week in 62.4 seconds, and every morning, right around 6:24 AM, we will share district facts on the district's Facebook and Twitter pages. District community members aged 65 and older are invited to apply for our senior activity pass, which allows free entry into a variety of activities, entertainment, home athletic contests, concerts, and theater productions, to name a few. If you'd like a pass, stop by the community services office at district center for the senior program at Normandy Park Education Center to pick up a free activity pass. Excuse me. Write your calendar calendars for this year's homecoming week, September 23rd through the 28th. Variety of activities are planned for the week, but a few community celebrations to be sure of our calendar for Friday, September 27th. Excuse me again. Bit of a sore time, Cole. All right, Friday, September 27th, our homecoming parade downtown White Bear Lake at 3 o'clock, and our homecoming football game at South Campus at 7:00. Saturday, the 28th, homecoming Bear Power 6.24K family fun run, walk at North Campus at 9:00 AM. This was known earlier, this is a different location due to our all-school reunion. So alumni association is hard at work, putting finishing touches on an all-school reunion and dedication event, celebrating the Washington School Bell that is now on display in front of district center as an alumni association gift. The event opened to graduates, staff, families, and community members will take place on the morning of Saturday, September 28th at district center, the original White Bear Lake High School. Festivities include a free pancake breakfast, an alumni car show, district center tours, photos with Bear and the bell, and a book signing with alumni author David Garrettbeck. All right, now at this time, I'd like to provide a few details about the bond referendum request. There'll be a number of fifth ballot, which will fund the capience of facilities plan projects that address building needs across the district. We're going to watch a short video that explains the compliance bond referendum in three minutes.
It's a 624 fact. We've got a really good thing going in White Bear Lake area schools. So good that families are choosing to build their homes and their futures in our communities. The district has seen 7% growth since 2010 and expects 2,000 more new students will enroll during the next 10 years. Let's face it, that's 25% higher than our current capacity. On November 5th, voters will be asked to approve a bond referendum to fund a comprehensive facilities plan. This plan is the result of a nearly year-long process involving a committee made up of 90 parents, staff, and community members. If the bond referendum is approved, every building in the district would be updated in some way, creating a domino effect of solutions. Here's a bird's eye view of the plan. District-wide additions and renovations would accommodate projected enrollment growth, safe, secure, and healthy learning environments for all students, increased opportunities for students through a single unified 9 through 12 high school experience, and flexibly designed learning spaces to support student-centered instruction. It's important to note, the average age of our district buildings is 50 years old. Tack on another five decades for the oldest building. If approved, there are building-specific changes that will happen in order to meet student enrollment and academic needs. A new elementary school would be built in Hugo, Onika Elementary would become a K through 5 school, and Hugo Elementary would become a northern early childhood center. The facilities plan also includes bringing all high school students together in a renovated north campus, which means better access to more comprehensive course offerings, including college and career pathways options, fewer transitions for students during critical adolescent developmental stages, and maintaining consistent longer-lasting staff and student relationships. The high school expansion allows for Sunrise Park Middle School to relocate to South Campus. The current Sunrise Park Middle School site would house various multi-generational community programs, including the senior center and early childhood programming, the transition education center, and the district office. This makes room for Central Middle School to expand and take over the current district center building. This comprehensive plan impacts all of our buildings and students. If the $326 million bond referendum is approved in November, the average homeowner would see a tax impact of about $23 per month. The future is bright. Families continue to choose our school district because of the way we support and engage all learners. After a tremendous amount of discussion and planning over the past year, the team came up with a plan that would accommodate our projected enrollment growth. It provides more programs and opportunities for all residents, aligns with the district's strategic plan, and is financially sustainable. Please learn all you can about the bond referendum, and remember to vote on November 5th.
All right, so that was the white video, and then in October, we will show the white video for your board meeting. So I've enjoyed invitations I've received from throughout the community, different organizations, to share information about the bond referendum, conversations with groups such as the Chamber of Commerce, ROR, the BHEC, the city councils, and the rich and dialogue and energy. So we will continue to attend meetings as invited and support those conversations. I want to note a couple of things, again, this day, we noted these earlier, but I want to take a moment to talk about them briefly. Our bond referendum public meetings will take place in late September and early October. So 8:30 AM on Tuesday, September 17th, at the senior center. 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 24th, at district center. 7:00 PM on Wednesday, October 2nd, at Hugo Elementary. 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 3rd, at that site's elementary. So we hope community members attend the meetings to learn about the bond referendum and ask any questions that they may have. The bond referendum website, www.isd624.org/bond2019, will continue to be the best place to find those kinds of information. All right, now with that, I'll turn it over to our newest, well, you're not exactly the original last year, because you're first in Florida, so turn it over to you, Andrea.
Great welcome. Great welcome back to all students and staff from 2019 and 2020 school year. We kicked off the new school year with a start of class four. In the home opener, our football team showed exceptional teamwork with a big win, who scored 46 to 6 over Mocha. Also sharing the spotlight, our boys cross-country team took first place in the Rosemont Invitational. Our girls soccer team took on their neighborhood rivals, the Montniise Evers, and came out with a 2-1 victory. All of our student athletes have been training hard and showing White Bear pride. Good luck to everyone in upcoming games, matches, and meets. Auditions for the following musical arena started last Tuesday the 3rd, and everyone who auditioned showed true musical talent. Coming up soon at the end of September is our homecoming celebration, starting with the power of playing football and some various activities start the week, including coronation. On Friday, September 27th, the homecoming parade will take place in the afternoon, leading up to the football game at 7:00 PM where the Bears take on the East Ridge Raptors. Throughout the week, students are invited to homecoming dance on Saturday, September 28th. Once again, welcome back everyone, as always, Go Bears.
All right, thank you very much.
Auditions for the fall musical, Anita, started last Tuesday, the 3rd, and everyone who auditioned showed true musical talent. Coming up soon at the end of September is our homecoming celebration, starting with our regular football and some various activities start the week, including coronation. On Fridays, September 27th, the homecoming parade will take place in the afternoon, leading up to the football game at 7:00 p.m. where the Bears take on the Eastridge Raptors. Throughout the week, students are invited to homecoming dance on Saturdays, September 28th. Once again, welcome back everyone, as always, go Bears.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we'll move into our first discussion item, D1, which is the 2019-2020 strategic planning, our priorities, excuse me. Dr. Kaczmarek.
Thank you, Chair Mullin, members of the board. So at our August 26th work-study meeting, we talked about our priorities for the year in some length, so I just wanted to recap those and what our priorities are for the coming year. So this was mentioned a little bit earlier as well, but our convergence of our building site plans and the district plan. So the district did a strategic planning process a couple of years ago, was adopted by the board in the spring of 2018, and then last year, each building went through a strategic planning process as well. And there are a lot of similarities that emerged, and it was, so that the fact that the building plans are supporting the district plan, a pretty remarkable development. So we talked about student-centered instruction being something that we can go ahead with and continue to define and make sure we're moving towards. Also, our socially-emotional learning emerged at our sites, which we'll do in the district's plan. We heard a little bit about that earlier. And then our equity, stated as an example, adoptions to the district plan, but also our buildings, each building is touched on in some way. So that the fact that those things have happened are very encouraging, and that will be, that'll be important for us moving forward. Also, our district strategic planning committee pulled together about a month ago and reviewed our existing strategic plan, and another strategy emerged from that process, and I just threw the reality of what's going on with the bond referendum, for example, but imagining new concepts in learning and teaching at White Bear Lake during high school. It's an important strategy as we move forward, bond referendum or not, or to think about our split campus model and how we might be able to improve that, hopefully by pulling together the under 11th high school level. And then priority, obviously, we heard a lot about it during my report, is the bonds of 2019 referendum, which will continue to be a priority as well. So that was it. Just wanted to recap what we talked about in the work-study meeting, so we'll discuss more, and create a report out in the public, so we'll hope that this can come out this time of year.
Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to our next discussion item, D2, the opening enrollment report. Mr. Wall.
Good evening, Chair Mullin, members of the board, Dr. Kaczmarek, and Ms. Carroll. Each year, we bring to the school board up to the opening week and the update of enrollment. We pull the enrollment on Friday of the first week of school, right around noon, so we're pulling at the same time every year. This slide compares elementary data from the first week of 2018 to the end of the first week of 2019. So the elementary numbers down just a bit. Generally, they're pretty consistent, but we had a big 5th grade class, a big 5th grade cohort that moved into the middle school, and so that explains a bit of what we've seen at the elementary school. Lake Years and Lincoln saw some modest increases. Badness Heights actually had a pretty significant increase this year. So we're at minus 28 at the elementary school. At the secondary, our middle schools are both up. I mentioned a large 5th grade cohort that has been moving through, that we've been watching as it's moved through and has impacted enrollment. So we're up 66 at the middle school. We also had a large cohort in 8th grade, or excuse me, in 9th, excuse me, 10th grade that moved to 11th. And so we saw some decreases at north campus, increases at south. The high school's about the same, plus 1. So our secondary enrollment is up 67 students, leaving the elementary and secondary combined at plus 39. This slide shows enrollment by grade level and then the cohort change. So our kindergarten class this year is at 681. That's nine students higher than we saw last year. First grade was a little bit unusual. We saw minus 21 in first grade, and we dug into it a little bit to see what happened to our K going into first grade. It was a bit of an anomaly, a large number of students, 26 students actually, moved out of the district and no longer living in the school district. So a little bit more of a fluid cohort going into first grade. The rest of the grade levels are all pretty consistent, up slightly at the other elementary grade levels. 12th grade at plus 82, we see that every year. That's accounts for our area learning center and our transition education program. It accounts for most of that 82 students in 12th grade. Now this chart, we show year 2, shows an eight-year enrollment trend. We'd show year 10, but it doesn't fit on the slide. So going back to 2010, 11, and 11, 12, we were seeing minus enrollment through the 2012-13 school year. And then 2013-14, we saw our first increasing enrollment for a while, and that trend has continued all the way through the present. 16, 17, and 17, 18 were a little bit outlier there. We saw really significant jumps in those years, and the last two years now have been more modest, which is probably okay, given that if we had 150 kids show up, we'd have trouble finding spaces for them. Our early childhood enrollment has been stable the last few years. There's just, a number of years ago, we improved our protocols for identifying early childhood and special needs students, and we've gotten much better at it. We identify kids early, we get an intervention at a much earlier age. And so now we're seeing more stable numbers in the early childhood and special education in our ECFP preschool numbers are pretty consistent. So good programming in those, we've reached a pretty significant number, and we're just pleased our families are continuing to take advantage of the opportunities presented to them. You've seen this graph before, and you actually saw it on the video earlier today. We've been, in our presentation, have been talking about 8,702 is the capacity of our school sites, as we said today. We've been telling people, we're going to be starting the school year right at about capacity. We didn't think we'd end up at exactly capacity, 8,702. So that's where we're at for enrollment. We'll be bringing enrollment back to you in October. Really, October is a more stable month for us. There's going to be some adjustments here over the next few weeks as we identify students who are enrolled but move out, and we'll have more than likely some students coming later on Holsdale the next week. Any questions on enrollment? Mr. Wilson.
Yes, have we had time to develop any data for open enrollment yet? Or is that really moving on our grid a little bit?
We do have data for open enrollment. I haven't, I didn't prepare anything for tonight, but we certainly could do that. And in a nutshell, in a nutshell, we have more students open enrollment all the way in, but that number has been, that gap has been decreasing significantly over this whole period of time, the last three or four years. We've seen that number of students opening enrollment out of our district decreasing pretty rapidly.
I might add a couple of things here, Tim. So that the final enrollment data is provided to us by, by the, so sometimes we report up enrollment, it's a little bit of a lagging indicator, so typically the data might be a little bit older because they, we don't necessarily know if the student's who's in the district or doesn't hold in the district. We may not even know about that student, so we can pull our own data, but the best data is what the NDE provides us, is to indicate that it's trending correctly. So we bottomed out just like three or four years ago, and now we're trending the right way, so that loss, that net loss is not as great.
It's important to note also that our enrollment projections are based on our district enrollment, not on open enrollment projections.
That's been a question that's come up. So that number, that 10,800 is based on what we anticipate our enrollment to be due to our resident program.
There are questions, comments, concerns?
I have one, Tim. Is the early childhood, is that opening enrollment each year? Is that, is that, is that the opening?
Oh, that is the opening also.
That's the opening each year.
Yeah, in fact, I noticed that the ECFP is at 136 here, Tim Maurer showed 138, so their numbers are a little more current than we thought. They have 30 open contracts right now in preschool, so we may see those numbers.
Part of our issue here is that we don't have space to pull behind these numbers at this point.
True. Yeah, we've got students waiting for services, and so space in early childhood is at premium. We're struggling with trying to beat the demand, there's significant demand for early childhood program.
Further comments, concerns, questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wall. We'll move to our discussion item D3, which is the discussion on the review and comment statement. Mr. Wall.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, as you well know, at the July 15th school board meeting, the board approved a decision to move forward with our facilities plan for a November 5th referendum. Minnesota statute 123B.71 requires school districts to submit a review and comment document for proposed referendum projects. Our consultants with Old Architects and Engineers, Paula Apelkowski and Sal Baigley, who are with us tonight and available for questions later, submitted that document on behalf of the school district to the Commissioner of Education. Subdivision 12 of that statute indicates that the school board must hold a public meeting to discuss the commissioner's review and comment, as well as publish a summary of the commissioner's response in a local newspaper. To meet those requirements, the board will discuss the review and comment this evening. The review and comment summary will be published in the White Bear Press on September 18th, and the review and comment document will continue to be available on our website. I mentioned that Mr. Apelkowski and Ms. Baigley prepared the review and comment document. You can see it here. It's about a 500-page document. It includes all the resources that our facilities committee looked at, and just a significant amount of information. So if anyone really wanted to dig in deep to understand the nuances of the projects that we're pursuing, they'd be able to find all that information on our website. As I noted earlier, that was, review and comment was submitted to the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education, July 16th. The criteria for, the criteria being reviewed centered around the educational and economic advisability of the proposed construction projects. This oversight allows the NDE to provide guidance and support to school districts. There are specific topics which we are required to report on in the review and comment document. That includes the geographic area and population being served, a list of existing school facilities, a list of specific deficiencies of the facility or the maintenance needs of the facilities, a description of the projects, specification of the source of project financing, documentation of the school district and contractors to comply with codes and NDE requirements. We received a letter from the Commissioner dated August 27th indicating her review and her response to our supplemental. This slide, okay. So in the findings, the summary of the proposed projects, really looked at the value of the referendum, the ballot date, general statement of the projects. And so the Commissioner wrote, the White Bear Lake area school district, IST624, is proposing a single-question referendum on November 5th, 2019, that would authorize $326 million in bonding authority to finance district-wide facility upgrades. The largest project components are the creation of a single-site 9th through 12th grade high school on the north campus school site and a new elementary school. Other projects proposed include district-wide classroom additions, renovations, and site improvements. The summary of need, as defined by the Commissioner, additional building space is needed to accommodate projected enrollment growth of an estimated 2,000 students over the next 10 years. The district has applied cost estimates to operate and staff the additional building space and believes existing revenue, along with additional revenue from enrollment growth, will be sufficient to fund any operational cost increases associated with the proposed facility improvements. In addition, the school board believes the proposed projects are in the best long-term interest of the district. And then finally, in the commissioner's letter included in the board packet tonight, the commissioner noted, based on the department's analysis of the school district's required documentation and other pertinent information from sources of the Minnesota Department of Education, the Commissioner of Education provides a positive review and comment. So we are happy with the commissioner's review of our work, and we're very thankful for the 90 community members who invested a great deal of time over the past year preparing the recommendation. Obviously, the commissioner was pleased with our work, and she's asked for the auditional documentation. So that is the review and comment. As I said, Paula Apelkowski and Sal Baigley from Old Architects and Engineers are here, and they're certainly experts in this field and can answer any questions, as well as Dr. Kaczmarek tonight.
Just any.
Yeah, I was just going to make a point, just so it's clear to the general public also, that the board has received that document previously and has had a chance to speak with Paula and Sarah at work-studies. So this isn't the first time we're seeing this document. We received it and had a chance to dive into it, and I know as I was going through it, it is amazing the amount of work that went into preparation. So thank you to all those people involved, and it's really a good feeling going into the bond referendum that it's been given a positive review and we don't have to send any additional information. So it means that people are doing their jobs and doing them exceptionally well. So thank you.
Other, Ms. Dr. Madsen?
I'll just add to what Ellen said, and I have had neighbors talk to me about it and ask questions, and everybody is so impressed with the collaborative nature and how many people had input and who came up with these ideas. A community came up with them and really worked hard. The number of hours people put in is amazing, all the subcommittees for the last two years with community members and parents and students. I think a lot of people know that, but everybody should know how many people came up with this and they had to have agreement to present it. So it was a wonderful process, the best I've ever seen in my almost 50 years in this district.
Ms. Carroll was a member of one of those committees, spent a lot of nights all over the district, really, digging in deep and giving feedback.
Are there comments, questions, concerns, anything else? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Wall.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our next discussion item, D4. Every year, the school board is tasked with evaluating the superintendent, and this year the process started in July, completed in August, and I believe that we did a review in the August work-study. We have, we now have a summary to read in for the record. So I would ask the clerk and thank the clerk for her work to give the summary prepared. I would ask her to read the summary for the record.
Okay. This report provides a summary of the board's performance evaluation of Dr. Wayne Kaczmarek for his second year as superintendent. The superintendent was evaluating using 10 questions related to performance areas of leadership for continuous improvement, stakeholder involvement, financial management, communication skills, and policy development. For each of these 10 questions, each board member chose a rating of meets expectations or does not meet expectations, and had the opportunity to add narrative comments. To aid in the evaluation, Dr. Kaczmarek provided the self-reflection of his performance. on school board district administration priorities for 2018, 2019. The evaluation was shared with Dr. Kaszczak in a closed session on August twenty-six, 2019. In this session, the board discussed possible goals for the 2019-20 school years and the areas for improvement. In each of the ten questions, Dr. Kaszczak received ratings of his expectations. Leadership for continuous improvement. The superintendent has provided leadership in the second year of the strategic plan, development of our equity commitment, and development of the comprehensive facilities plan. These initiatives have been inclusive, collaborative, and transparent. He has a good eye for balance, seeing how we need to balance our obligations and make changes to ensure quality student experience. It is clear to the board that he has student achievement at the forefront of his priorities. He has been trying new approaches in this area, for example, instructional cabinet, and is regularly evaluating their effectiveness. He is able to identify parts of the site plans that will need significant systemic support, such as grading and reporting. Dr. Kaszczak has sculpted the district's vision for at least the next ten years. Stakeholder involvement. Dr. Kaszczak's inclusion of personnel from teaching and administrative ranks, as well as student, parent, and community members at large, speaks highly of his ability to reach people and get them involved in district initiatives. He has built a positive relationship with his cabinet and leadership team. This is apparent through the topic briefings and interchanges with his management team members at our board and board study meetings. It is apparent that he values staff and student input at agency. Financial management. He has been involved with school finances all his administrative life. He has developed great acumen for all aspects of financial management, and has an ability to explain complex financial data. His oversight of the district's financial picture and resulting budget tightening during the 2018-19 year, our Ellen City is working hard to keep the district physically strong. He ensures that the strategic plan is a key driving force for budgeting initiatives. Under his leadership, the district has continued to receive financial management and reporting awards. Communication skills. Dr. Kaszczak demonstrates effective communication skills and multiple opportunities to meet with staff, students, families, community members impressed. The superintendent is skillful at listening and gives thoughtful, honest answers, presenting concepts in understandable terms with a calm demeanor. Policy development. The superintendent works for the policy committee and his team to ensure consistent and timely policy review. The board appreciates the progressive approach and support to have a deep look at policies to ensure they are inclusive and respectful. The board looks forward to Dr. Kaszczak's continued strong leadership to move the district forward on its mission and appreciates the development of an atmosphere of collaboration. So thank you, Dr. Kaszczak.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to our next discussion item, D5. On occasion, the policy committee brings forth, re-reviews policies. And this month, we have for our first reading, the reading, policy two oh five, policy four oh two, policy four nineteen, policy four twenty-three, and policy five twenty-three. Are there any questions, concerns, comments regarding any of these policies? They're in the packet, and this will be the time to bring that out so that they can move forward to the next month. Any questions, concerns, comments? Okay, so those policies will then move forward to next month for their final reading and to be adopted as updated policies. We will move to our next, our first and our only operational item, operational item E1. Bear with me one second. And that is... Mr. Wolf, I'm assuming this is you.
I'll take it then. I'll take it.
E1, which is the action on the tentative agreement, 2019-2021 agreement with the White Bear Lake Teachers Association. And there it is. So, Mr. Wolf.
All right, so just a couple of notes. First of all, as I had stated before, we're very excited to be at this place in September. And we're hopeful that we will be getting the first payroll here for our teacher group, and we'll have a settlement in place, so we're very excited about that. I'd just like to say thank you very much to the district team that put in a lot of hours to make that happen. And also a big thank you to the team from the teachers association who came to the table, ready to collaborate. And that's always what we want to see, and it was a really positive process. So just want to say a big thank you on that end once again. This agreement was ratified by the teachers at the end of August. And now it's the school board's turn. And the only other thing that I would mention is that we've had a number of closed sessions leading up to this. And so we've had conversation with the board surrounding this summary about that agreement.
So we have a recommendation to approve the proposed 2019-2021 master agreement with the White Bear Lake Teachers Association by passing the following resolution. Whereas the parties have reached a tentative agreement on July one, 2019, June thirtieth, 2021 contract, whereas the association has ratified the contract, there then hereby resolved that the school board and the independent school district, six-two-four, approves the 2019-2021 agreement and authorizes the chair and the clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the school board. Is there a motion? If so, a motion by Mr. Wilson, if there is a second. Second by Ms. Ellison. This, let's have this require a call vote please. Actually, let me back up, please, one second. Three discussions regarding the resolution. See none, now the time will call vote, please.
Wilson?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fady?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Your master?
Aye.
Okay, we have ratified, we have an agreement. Thank you very much. With that, this is the portion of the meeting that we opened it up for board forum. Is there anything under board forum that we'd like to discuss? See none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Chair, I think you adjourn. And I'll second that, and all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are...